Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us this afternoon for another one of our weekly town hall meetings on 1341 here at Springmore. I don't know if you've been outside today, but it's pretty warm. Can't think of a warmer day this year so far. So, I was driving around trying to find a place to get some Chinese food. I was just craving Chinese. I was starving. And I went to two places that was to go only, and I just kind of wanted to sit by myself. So, took a, if you have a hard time finding a place if you're going to sit down, not much ambiance, but Wang's Kitchen over in the New Shopping Center where Aldi is. They are open for takeout and you can sit down. Again, it's not the ambiance of Imperial Gardens, but it does have, it was nice and cool in there. And they have served sweet tea by like this huge plastic container, like you'd get this huge thing like egg drop soup in. So, it's worth the sweet tea just to go by there. So, if you're hungry for Chinese, just Wang's Kitchen, pretty good. So, I wanted to just inform you about that. Give a local shout out to a business here in North Riley. But more importantly, I want to start off by talking about the employee fund that y'all were so graciously raised for the employees here at Springmore. And hopefully, if you've got your mail already today, you'll see all the information and the totals and the summary of everything that was collected and distributed to the staff. We distributed money to staff yesterday from 2:30 to 4:00, and then again this morning from 6:30 to 8:30. So, we tried to have different times where we could hit all different shifts. People going home yesterday and coming in on second shift and leaving on first shift. And then again this morning with people coming in on first and leaving on third. So, we got a lot of money into employees' hands. And I cannot tell you how excited and thankful and just overwhelmed they were with excitement whenever they, we handed them the money. They said, "Thank you." I was, me and Mrs. Jan Christensen, the resident association president, we handed it out. I told them it was all from the residents. I was just here to say thank you as the, as the executive director. And we put a nice letter in there that we composed as a joint effort. And I think it was really, really well received, the letter. I know the money was. It was absolutely amazing. So, if you haven't seen your memo yet, you'll see it today. It's in your mailbox. But over the two-week period, we raised $61,750. That is beyond what I thought we would raise. We had hoped to raise about half that to give a meaningful gift. And we talked about what could be a meaningful gift for someone. And, and we had an idea of amount for full-time and an amount for part-time. We wanted to at least do 100, and we at least wanted to do 50 for, for part-time. So, with the amount of money we had, it was unbelievable. For almost 550 employees, we were able to give all full-time employees $155 and part-time employees $65. So, that is just an amazing accomplishment of your generosity. We really, really appreciate it. On behalf of all the Springmore staff and from myself, thank you very much. I was lucky enough to be a part of that as well. We didn't leave any administration staff out or, or anyone of that nature. So, we all got to benefit from that. And I'm as thankful as anybody. So, thank you very, very much. I do want to hopefully pay that back to the local community somehow, first by doing some lunch today at Wang's Kitchen and, and then gonna, gonna give it back, you know, through other ways here in the, in the local community. But thank you very much. Please pass that along to your friends and family. I will say, I did send an email out to all the Stuart Health Center family members. And then Daniel's gonna be sending one out, if he hasn't already, to the IL resident family members. We have email addresses for because we had a lot of contributions from families. And as I mentioned last time, we've had, I mean, every community I've ever worked in, especially here, always have residents and family members asking if they can give money to an employee for Christmas or, or tip somebody. And always have to be the bad guy and say, "No, you can't. No, you can't." So, this was the one opportunity that we wanted to take for y'all to give to an employee appreciation fund during a desperate time where people are really struggling, when spouses are out of work and, and there's no childcare, and they're having to just kind of piece things together and really, you know, make a difference in their life. And the family members were a huge part of that. So, we wanted to say thank you to them. So, they got the memo saying thank you with the totals as well. So, for all of y'all that contributed, thank you all very much. I just want to hit a couple of reminders, and we'll hit a couple of normal topics, and then we'll take some questions. Things have opened back up, which is good. So, we'll talk more about that in a little bit. But a few reminders from the houses and villas. I know everything's been off track recently, just in life and in general. But a friendly reminder about pulling the trash out. If you live in a house or a villa, we need to take that down on Tuesday and take it down on Friday. Those are the two days where you need to put it out. They'll come collect it. Andy goes around and gets all the trash. And I think just, I think people are all scheduled with it. But just remember Tuesday and Friday, make sure that you get that out so he can get all that done and make sure that it doesn't pile up. So, put that on your calendar. For 1341, we have used this TV station and the portal more than we probably ever have in Springmore. We are streaming a ton of stuff. We are recording a ton of stuff, and we're showing a ton of stuff. So, I don't think the system was probably quite made for the amount of volume and media that we're putting on it. But, but it is doing all it can. So, Daniel has been amazing with that. And I joke with him about being our engineer, but he really is like an engineer with this whole system and pretty much everything we do here. But he's done an amazing job with it. So, if it's bad sound or bad lighting, please know we're working on that. A couple of things that contributed to that is we have got to get a new digital upgrade from Spectrum. I think everybody knows we were supposed to start that before the pandemic, and we had to stop because we couldn't have visitors in. Now, we're trying to reschedule that to have them come in and switch out your boxes. Have a little holdup now because I think they want to do it all at once, and I can't have them go into the health center. So, we're kind of trying to negotiate that now. Daniel and I have a call with Spectrum next week to see where we are on that. So, there's gotta be some upgrades due to the, to the actual cable system that we're gonna be doing. And then there is a server part that we need to do on our part to upgrade our system to get it where it needs to be. So, so just be mindful. We know that the, the TV channel's a little faulty. It's not as perfect as it should, but we're working on it. So, just be mindful of that. We have had some amazing people that have helped on 1341. Each Friday, Holly's been here taking notes for the recap memo, well, at least about halfway through. I did them for a while, and she was nice enough to just come and take notes like a board meeting and, and get it out to everybody. And Daniel's been here to help set it up. And Brad's been here to help take questions and just help do everything. So, they've been a huge help. All the pathways people, you know, the chaplains that have done stuff, Lori and Juliana. We've had a lot of guest people here come in and do vespers. You know, Carrie Ritchie, Dr. Alan Page has been in here to do vespers. And then weekly occurring things, Dr. Tom Jackson's done Sunday School every Sunday. And we've had some faithful musicians, Ms. Betty Sharp and Ms. Sue Polly, who do the music. And I'm sure I've missed some other ones. Those are just some off the top of my head that I know that's been really on 1341 a lot, or you've heard them a lot. So, I just want to say thank you to them. And if there's anything that you can't hear them, or it has drowned it out, or the sound's not good, it is not their fault. I promise you, it is the TV channel, and we're working on that. Another friendly reminder is about masks. We need to continue to wear masks when we're in common areas. That goes for all of our employees as well. That is still highly recommended by CDC and everyone else. And a lot of stores are, you know, require, need to wear masks when you go in. So, you know, of course, when you're in the dining room eating, or if you're in your apartment, or even if you're in a large gathering at a meeting, we have a meeting later this afternoon, a management advisory committee meeting. We'll be sitting no more than 10 people. It's actually set up. You can't see it in here. But, you know, we won't have our mask on once we're in an area and we're in a meeting. But if you're walking through the hall or at the post office or getting your mail in the common area, please make sure you have yours mask on. I sent a reminder out to staff today as well to, to make sure that they have their masks on at all time as well. Because I know it's not, it's a two-way street, and we don't need to get lax on any of that. So, just remember your mask. So, we'll jump into a few things with spiritual wellness. As far as fitness, the pool opened Monday, so, so far, so good from what Carrie told me. I know some people have been anxious to get back in there. So, if you are wanting to make a reservation or learn about the swimming, don't hesitate to call her at 7147, and she'll get that all squared away. If you have any questions as well, just give her a call, and she'll help you get everything you need to know about getting back in the pool in both North and South Village. Look forward to opening up the exercise rooms soon as well. We're having to wait a little bit on that, but we still have the exercise equipment in the terrace room and in the great room. So, please continue to use that as much as you like. As far as spiritual wellness, just gonna just remind you of a few reoccurring things. I'd always like to highlight them. The Zoom discussion call tomorrow, Thursday at 10:30. That's gonna be, I think, the Bible study. No, that's not, sorry. Zoom discussion call tomorrow at 10:30. So, call Juliana if you'd like to join. The Zoom's been really good. Really looking forward to people getting back together and having, you know, face-to-face conversations and discussions, especially with everything going on now. I think it's very important to talk to each other and, and be around each other. And we're still kind of limited to that. So, we're gonna continue the Zoom for now. And of course, Sunday School, 10:00 AM by Dr. Tom Jackson. He's gonna do that as normal. And then vespers on Sunday as normal at 7:00 PM. And Bible study, it was rescheduled, and it will begin this coming Tuesday, June 9th at 3:00 PM. So, they were gracious enough to reschedule that. We needed auditorium to give out y'all's gracious gifts to our employees. So, we, we cut into that a little bit. So, the Bible study is rescheduled for this coming Tuesday, the 9th at 3:00 PM. For Resident Life, a couple announcements from Leah. She said, "We're working to get all the pathway departments back under one umbrella with a new Pathways booklet, although different, will be out in July." So, also, outside contractors, art instructors, exercise instructors, vespers, speakers/ministers will be allowed back in with screening, masks, and social distancing for groups 10 and under. So, we're wanting to have them come back in whenever they like. I see no reason for an art instructor not to be able to come in and do a class of 10 people. If they're screened, then they're fine. Exercise, class, vespers, same thing. It's exactly where we left off before we had to shut everything off. And now, we're just a perfect example of just backtracking. So, if you could look at the memos, I don't know, a month and a half ago, you'll probably see that's probably about where we left off. So, we're excited to get back to that. But it's, it's gonna be July before we start that. We're gonna go through the month of June. I know June just started. But I'm gonna have that rolling back in July. And I think, and I feel really confident about that. Many residents have requested instructions about masks. So, we are putting an instructional video on the portal and on 1340 on how to wear masks and how to care for them. So, I know Leah's getting more masks for everybody. And these are a little more, I think, maybe higher quality, more, more custom fit or custom-made to fix your face a little better. And they should be pretty durable. I know they can be washed and cleaned and reused. So, so just be looking for some information on that. I'm afraid that we'll be wearing masks or, maybe not required to wear them for, you know, forever. Well, obviously not forever, but, you know, for a couple more months. But I think a lot of people just will practice those safe standards and best practices of wearing masks. So, so something y'all probably want to, probably use, you know, for months to come. And then lastly, this week's deliveries include a booklet of all the poems submitted for the poetry contests. We thought you might enjoy reading them. So, of course, there'll be a few surprises delivered as well. So, I'm not sure if they have announced who won the poetry contest or not. Holly, do we know? They have not, have not announced that yet. So, I do not know who won that. So, we are looking forward to that. What's the difference in a poetry contest like a poetry slam? Do y'all know? Holly, Daniel, Brad, you're in the know with this stuff. What's a poetry slam? Just read. Does anybody know what a poetry slam is? So, Daniel's gonna Google it. I have nothing to give away today. I just, I just, I'm just, I could buy you- All right. So, a poetry slam is kind of like a, I don't know, it's like a contest for poetry where you, you, I guess you, spoken words is kind of like, maybe like a rap or a, yeah. I don't think it's just the, the eloquent poetry that you would write and submit. And it's more of a, you know, it's a poetry slam. A little more, probably a little more entertaining, perhaps, a more energetic and done in front of a live audience for, for, for a contest. So, I don't think we're quite ready for a poetry slam. But poetry contests will continue here at Springmore, and we'll see who the winner is. But if you guys want to start poetry slam, I think that would be pretty cool. I'm sure Leah would be all about that. So, all right. So, we will move along to a few other announcements. Visitations. We have thankfully started visitations again this, this week. So, we started everything on Monday, the dining room and the salon and visitations. So, I hope visitations are going well. I'm not sure if you've had family members over yet or not. But remember that visitations can take place outside. We do need to be practiced social distancing, so six feet apart, no more than 10 people. I think outside is actually 25, but I would highly encourage maybe 25 people not to come and visit. So, I know more than one probably wants to come if you have a family. But, but again, begin those outdoor visits. They started Monday. I hope they're going well. It's been really nice weather. So, that will continue. And also, we have the, the two common rooms set up where you can visit inside. That started Monday as well. The two rooms, one in North Village, one in South Village. North Village is the main lobby, right as you come in at the, the main entrance. And at South Village, it's the gathering room. It's a nice decorated room right to the left behind Jim Davis. And those are the two rooms. They are available for visits from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 PM. And they're required to have a reservation or a sign up. So, right now, we have a sign up sheet at the front desk where you can come down and you can sign up for an hour time slot, or you can just call the front desk, North or South Village. They have them at both. And you can tell Jim or Marlene or Charles, whoever answers the phone, that you want to reserve a certain time, and hopefully it's not reserved. And then, and then it's yours for that hour. So, you need to make sure you do tell your family and make sure it gets back to them. But they'll be kind of monitoring it to make sure, you know, if there's another family waiting, as 10 minutes pass, you know, we'll politely say, "Hey, the next family's waiting." And hopefully it won't be like that. But that's why we want it kind of in a monitored area. And then also be mindful, when family members do come in, they'll have to be screened at the main entrance, answer the four questions, and you'll have to wear a mask. So, if family members hopefully will have their own mask, if not, we'll have some at the front desk that we can give them. But again, visitors are screened, temperature questions, social distance, why being, why being inside, no more than 10 people, and have to wear a mask. And just in those two common areas. So, that's the only place. So, please, please do not let family members inside of Springmore in your apartment down the hallways. We are not ready for that. That is just, that's way too much of a risk right now. We want to know who's coming in Springmore, and we only want to go into certain spaces so they can be properly cleaned so the next family can come. So, so just please be mindful of that. And try to give everybody, try to give the front desk a 24-hour notice before you do a visitation as well. That will help them plan a little better. And lastly on that, we'll have, Brad's work has helped me with this. And there'll be an online option where families can go on and sign up online to do a visitation. We'll be sending an email out to all the family members with a link of how to sign up for North Village and sign up for South Village. And they can do that for you. So, they, they can get ahold of you. Or you can just go down and sign up yourself or just, or call the front desk. We wanted to have as many options available with families, someone being out of town or not right here in Riley, maybe in Cary or Durham. They can just do it online. Say, "Hey, Mom, I'm coming to see you tomorrow at 11:00. So, just meet me down at the lobby." So, we'll have that all squared away. Dining, dining just started on Tuesday. That was a little, a day later than the salons and the pool. And from what I can tell, it's going well so far. I did see lunch yesterday. I did not get to see dinner, but I'm going to see dinner tonight. I know we have the three options available of dining in the dining room. We had the takeout, and we had the grab-and-go stuff. So, I think it is, I think it's gonna go well. I think that will continue to evolve. But right now, I have those three options. There's no real heavy load on one, which is nice. So, so just, if any kind of feedback that you can provide Jennifer, the better. Because I'm not saying it's perfect, and I'm not saying we don't have to tweak it. We're only the second day in. But I like what she has as far as the stuff in the grill and bistro, the grab-and-go stuff. There are more nicer things that you can take in and warm up like a brisket or salmon and rice or macaroni and cheese. So, that's a way to still utilize that area without having to use the staff and all the amenities to cook it. And then we have over in the bistro, or at least the cafe over on North Village, another area for takeout and delivery, which you just sign up. And Adam and Casey were doing that yesterday. That went well. And then, of course, if you're eating in the dining room, either waited service or going through the line, all that's being regulated, we can have up to, I think, 44 people in the dining room or 45 at one time. And we're doing that as kind of a staggered entry. We were gonna do two seating, like, I don't know, like 4:30 to 6:00, and then maybe 6:30 to 8:00. Probably not that late, but I'm just gonna use in half-hour increments there. But we decided to do the staggered entry from 4:30 to 7:00. A lot of restaurants are doing that, a lot of stores. I think it will flow better. I think a lot of people are still hesitant to come out. And with having lunch and dinner available, we think that's gonna work well, especially with the, with the amount of people we have here at Springmore. I think it will flow well. So, anyway, we're gonna try that and see. Been pleased with it so far. I'm excited for y'all to meet JP and actually see him, actually see his face once we can take off our mask. But you'll see him, he's typical, you know, just great-looking chef, white chef coat, top hat, very gregarious, very outgoing, very friendly. So, I know he's excited to meet y'all. You'll see him out and about some, and hopefully more soon. So, again, just any, any feedback you can provide dining services, please don't hesitate. We're, we're trying this for the first time. So, so we don't know. We, hopefully it will work. I'm confident. But we can always do better. So, any feedback and any questions, make sure that you just call dining and Jennifer, and she'll be happy to answer those as best she can for you. So, a couple of closing things I want to talk about, kind of goes along with the masks and the staff and the social distancing. I know that, and I can just sense it. And I think it, I knew it happened. I think that we're all getting more relaxed, which I think we all need to be more relaxed. It's been very stressful, but I don't think we need to get more relaxed on the practices that we've been doing to stay safe and stay, stay healthy, especially at Springmore, the population that live here. So, as more things open up and as restrictions loosen, we still need to be very mindful that we are at a very high risk to perhaps either catch the virus or to spread it. So, so just please be mindful of if you're visiting family or if you're going somewhere, to just make sure you're still wearing your mask, make sure you're social distancing, you know, make sure you're not hugging and kissing people that you hadn't seen, you know, in a couple of weeks or months, that they may go and we don't know who, who they've seen. And I know that's very, very hard. Shaking hands, I can't tell you the last time I shook somebody's hand. I mean, it was March, early March when all this started. So, just please be mindful of that. We just, we don't want to get too relaxed. Again, I sent out an email to the staff. It's two, two emails, one to all the staff about masks and make sure we don't let our guard down. And we've done a good job and keep up the good work. And then another email to the, to the health center, especially the nurses and everybody, to make sure that they continue to keep that up. Because that's the area that's so, so vulnerable. That's the things you hear so much about. So, we've done so well with that, knock on wood, and had best practices. So, we cannot let our guard down with that. That's why we can't have visitors yet. Everybody's gotta be screened. No family members yet. So, so just keep on that. Make sure you're wearing your mask and just do not let your guard down. Because it's, I think we're more vulnerable now than ever, just because more things are open and we're more relaxed. So, try to relax, but still stay diligent on all the safe practices you're doing. And lastly, I don't, I was thinking about this earlier, and I'm not near intelligent enough to talk about it. But it seems as just recent that, that, that just everything going on in the world, that history's just kind of repeating itself. And I tried to read a little bit about that and theories about it. And again, it's way over my intelligence level. But, I mean, I understand the basics of it. But, you know, I, everything that's going on with this pandemic for the past 90 days that happened over 100 years ago, it's, I mean, it's the exact same thing. And people wearing masks and shutting things down. And I had Kay Bullock sent me some pictures and some articles about the, it's the Spanish flu in 1918. And some of the same things that they were doing then, we're doing now of restaurants closed, salons closed. And it was no more than 10 people at a gathering. So, even after 100 years, still no more, no less than 10 people gathered. And I think a lot of rules and regulations were, were set during that time. And I guess that's still considered a best practice. It's kind of odd. But this whole thing, I never thought I would see anything like this where the best solution to stay safe and not get sick is just to literally stay home and not go anywhere. I think I've said it before, it seems so archaic to just not, that's just the best solution that they have. But obviously, it's proven well. And, and it's just, just really weird that that's kind of, kind of reoccurring again. I don't know how to, you know, not forget about it. I'll, I'll never forget about it. I never thought I'd go through something like this with so far advanced technology and medicine. And, you know, here we are. And then of the recent weeks with all this stuff going on with all the riots and the, and the senseless killing of George Floyd, it's just, it's heartbreaking to see all this stuff happening. I did not live, obviously, during more harsh times that a lot of y'all have seen or my parents lived through. And to just kind of see this again, it's just really, really just, I don't know, it just seems like we've taken such a huge step back. And it's just kind of, it's just, everything just seems so down and sad right now. Having to explain to my son different things about race and things that I guess I was naive to think, "Well, I don't have to talk about that." And I knew I would. But just, just to see it so obvious and just so, just so right there in your face. And I'm not saying good or bad about anything. I'm not talking politics or right or wrong. But it is, it's, it's in front of us, and, and things are happening. And it just seems like things are just kind of repeating itself. So, I don't know the message behind this, other than I guess history may repeat itself. And it seems like we learn from things. But from what I understand, as generations pass, we forget about things, we get lax, like not wearing our mask. And then it evolves again, and it bubbles up. So, so hopefully y'all will never see anything like this again, and things will get better and, you know, in society and, and the health front and just the world in general. But it's just a very odd time. I hate to see how down everything is, you know. But, but anyway, hopefully things will get better. I think it's very important to have discussion groups. I just want to do those one-on-one about current issues at this time. I think just talk to any people and, and have those relationships with people and being able to just tell people what you're thinking and kind of grieve with people sometimes is important, that, that human touch that we're kind of known for in, in our industry. So, so just be mindful of that. And if anybody can give me a, a very simple layman's term one day about if history repeats itself, I would love to, I'd love to know more about it on a, on a very just, you know, ABC student level, you know, not a, not a honors college-type guy, which I was not. Brad may have been, and Holly and Daniel. But that is, I was a more ABC student, probably less As and more Bs and Cs. But, you know, Cs equal degrees, and somehow I got two, and I'm pretty thankful for that. So, anyway, if y'all have any questions, I will be more than happy to, to take any calls and try to answer anything I can. 7054 is the number to call. So, we'll see what you guys got, and I'll try to answer whatever we have. All right. Just a little quick reminder that delivery's still available. Yes, that is, that is one of the three options we have. Dining in, takeout, or delivery. So, we want to continue doing that a little bit longer. We know that that's a nice option. And we can't continue to do it forever. But I know people are very hesitant about getting out, and it's been a nice amenity. So, for, for the, for the time being, we're gonna continue to do delivery. And yes, that is still available. All right. Yeah. The question was about the kitchen construction update. Get a weekly update. So, this week was that they should be out hopefully exactly about two weeks. They're, they're doing the epoxy flooring now, which is the last part. And I have, I've told myself all week I was gonna go down there and look at it, and I have not. I have not made it down there. But I did talk to the contractor, and that's the last thing. So, he's thinking mid-June. Don't hold me to that, because I have been burned way too many times with hopeful ending dates, which hadn't happened. But June 5th, June 15th, hopefully is when they'll be done with the kitchen. But then after that, we have, they have to get all their stuff out. And then we have to get all of our equipment that's stored in the two tractor trailers that you see, maybe in that lot on Creedmore Road between the bank and the 7200 building. That's housing all of our kitchen equipment. We've got to get that installed back in, hooked all back up with utilities. That's gonna take some time. And then the county's gotta come in, inspect everything, and give us the permit to switch from the temporary kitchen back to our newly constructed kitchen. They have to, inspectors have to come out, do everything. So, it's probably gonna be, you know, mid-July before we're up and running in that kitchen. So, probably, you know, another, you know, probably another six weeks or so before it's up and running. But it is, it's doing well. Really no holdups, other than some plumbing issues we had that set us back about two weeks. I think I was probably a little more, I think the timeframe has taken four to five months. It's been much more realistic than what we really originally anticipated. But it's a lot of information. I'm excited because it's going along really well, and it looks amazing. And I can't wait to see, for y'all to see the before and after. That was something that this Kay suggested we do. And we got video of before, and then obviously we'll see the after, which will be awesome. And then obviously we'll see the after, which will be awesome. So the question is, when are the specialists able to come back into the clinic? Like the audiologist, and the podiatrist, the ophthalmologist? I do not know the answer to that. I'm going to have Holly check with Joyce, and then she will put it in the recap memo. I am just not sure. I don't know if we're, if we're holding off on them, or they're not just wanting to come, or, or what the issue may be. So just, that's a great question, and we'll find out, and Holly will put it in the recap memo. All right, so the question is, will the sensors on the sliding doors be turned back on? I'm not sure of that either. We, that's worked well so far. I think it's worked better than not having them on. I have not heard people complain greatly about it. Although y'all may be grumbling and thinking that's the dumbest thing you ever heard. Or maybe it's not as good as, as you'd like for it to be. But, but for right now, I think we're going to keep it the way it is. I think it's just, it's worked well so far. So I think when we loosen things up, maybe around phase three, and family members can come in more freely, we'll probably do that. But the whole, the whole reason behind that is, is we have to screen everyone that comes into Springmore. So even if we let family members eventually, well, obviously, when we let family members come back in, the question's going to be, do we let them just come in the main entrance and not be screened? Or be self-screened? Or do we make them come through the main entrance where they are screened? So for right now, I can't justify that any contractor, any, any pertinent person that has to be here, a vendor, or anybody, they have to be, and every employee has to be screened, temperature and questions. So I can't let family members just bypass all of that. So we're going to keep the sensors off for a little bit longer. Like I said, I don't think it's really stopped much, or hurt anybody too terribly bad. If it has, terrible, Holly will take care of it. Now you can, you can let me know, and we'll see what we can do. All right. So the question was, how can employees receive their appreciation gift? That if they did not come to the two times I mentioned earlier, which is yesterday and today. Jim Cox, our Human Resource Director, has all of those envelopes in his office. And he will be working with the department managers to make sure that we get those out to everybody. The two departments are going to be the hardest to get, are the two biggest, which is dining and then the health center. The health center has over 200 employees in itself. You know, three shifts around the clock, seven days a week. So Jim is going to work with the, with certain department heads to do that. But most will come to Jim's office and pick them up the next time they are there. But if they are, if they are allowed to be given to a department manager, or somebody of a manager within the department, they'll have to sign saying they took X amount of checks. And then they'll have a sign sheet where when the person comes to pick up their check, they have to physically sign for it, and it's got to be returned back to Jim. So that's going to be the, the option of either they're going to take that responsibility to do, or they're just going to send them to Jim. But we'll make sure they get their money. So the question was, how are you supposed to submit your meal delivery options? And is it still on the portal? Daniel says no, and I think it's not either. I think Jennifer told me they've taken off the portal as well. I'm not sure why, but I assume it's just with the different options we have now. And we're not just doing delivery, we're doing takeout, we're doing delivery, and we're doing grab and go, and we're doing dining. That I think right now that you're actually walking down. Okay, so you may want to, Jennifer may have to correct me. I'll have Holly check this too. But I think you can walk down and place your order for delivery. Matter of fact, I know you can do that, because Adam was doing that yesterday when I went down there. There, I think you can call the number still, and place your order for delivery. And then there should still be an email address. I think it's dining.services@springmore.org. So those are the three ways to come down, do it physically, call, or email. And if that is not correct, Holly will verify that and put that in the recap. A lot of responsibility on Holly this time. Got a lot of, a lot of, yeah, a lot of follow, a lot of investigation. Question is about, is the mobile vet going to return anytime soon? I, I didn't know we had a mobile vet. I, that, that sounds familiar, because I think somebody may have asked me. But I have no idea who schedules that, and I have no idea when they come or who they are. If somebody wants to call and tell me who normally sets that up, is it Leah, or front desk? I'm just, I'm not sure who does that. Do you know, Daniel, does the mobile vet? I, I just have no idea. But I would like to bring my little dog Pixie if it's, if it's available for employees, which probably not. But we'll find out. I have, I just, I'm not sure about the mobile vet. Question number three for Holly to find out. Earning her bonus and her regular pay this week. Okay, so the question was, meeting families for outside visits, do you need to be screened? Can you go for a walk? Do you have to sign up? So first of all, yes, they can come, and y'all can take a walk all around campus. It's, that's the best part, is they can come here. We have 42 beautiful acres on both sides of the street that y'all can walk around and enjoy each other's company. That's awesome. I would highly recommend that. That is great. You do need to social distance, and you do need to, we don't have to wear masks when you're outside. But you know, some people do wear the mask when they're outside. I personally don't, to get some fresh air. But you do not have to sign up for that. So you don't have to sign up, and they can come on campus, and, and y'all can go for a walk on campus. Okay, so the winner of our poetry slam, which I'm not surprised, I can see them on stage right now, is... We may have some discretion. Okay, I do not have the official winner to the poetry slam. Springmore's version of the poetry contest. So I thought we, we had some winners announced, but we'll have to build up some anticipation for that. So, but we will highlight the poem next week of whoever won. If there's multiple winners or whatever, but, but yes. Yep, so just a reminder, somebody wanted me to remind that the gift was tax-free to the employees. Yes, that's why we ask for cash and checks made out to cash. So it can be tax-free to the employee for them to maximize that. We didn't want to have to send anything through payroll, and then have to do the, you know, to process payroll and to do taxes. It was just the easiest way for us to, to maximize the gift to them. So it's a gift from a resident to a gift to an employee, which is obviously completely legal. And we checked with all of our accountants. But it's not, it's not, it was not taxable to the employee, but it's not going to be tax-deductible for you. It's just a, it was a straight-out gift from resident to employee. And they got actual cash, which was awesome. I mean, 500-some-odd envelope stuff with cash. It was really, really cool. Oh, yep. All right, so, so just a comment. Resident went to their local physician, and the physician was very complimentary about Springmore by not having any active cases. So yeah, I've been beyond thrilled about that, and just family calling from back home, and just people calling and asking. And you know, it's nothing to be ashamed of if you are. We've just been very blessed, and been very hard, and with a little bit of luck as well. I think just not to have anything. I think luck always plays a little bit. But we have tried, I don't know if, if I've been a part of an effort in the 15 years that I've been doing this, which is not terribly long, but it's long enough for to have some experience of ever putting this much effort into something day after day after day, that is just so trying. It's the most trying thing I've ever done in my entire life, where you do not know what day it is. You forget about all the normal things you're supposed to do, which are now happening again, like the MAC meeting, and trying to prepare a budget, and not sleeping, and working crazy hours. And, but it's, it's been a huge team effort. So, so it's been awesome. It's been worth, and it's not over yet. That's why I say we do not want to let our guard down, because, because it's not over yet. And I think we're more vulnerable now than ever, so we just got to, got to stay up on that. Oh, let me see that. All right, so we have, so we do have winners of the poetry contest. So first place goes to Ms. Ruth O'Sullivan. All right, can I read Ms. Ruth O'Sullivan's? All right, I'm going to read Ms. Ruth O'Sullivan. All right. "It Is What It Is." I love that saying. Can I read it? Sure? Secret? Okay. "It Is What It Is," I love that. "Like him or not, I remember this so much." It seems like Donald Rumsfeld during, during his time would say that all the time. And I had a director of nursing when I was very young who said that, and it drove me crazy. But "It Is What It Is" by Ms. Ruth O'Sullivan. "There once was a group of oldies. Some were silver, some were goldies. They were bound together with masks on their faces to stop the bad virus, which was off to the races. But it didn't stop us, as we all obeyed the rules and thought that those who did not were really, really fools. We all know that soon we're going to be okay, and when that happens, we'll all shout, 'Hooray!' All right, Ms. Sullivan, very, very good. I like that. "It Is What It Is." It's like one of those great terms of unprecedented times. "We're going to get through this together." I mean, just, those are just classic sayings. We got, oh, Mr. Bill Marley, number two, second place. All right, Mr. Bill Marley throwing down on the poetry on limericks. Let's talk about coronavirus limericks. One, "As the retro pandemic covers the world, a rush-to-find toilet paper has us all in a swirl." "What napkins do, or just clog up the loo and put Randy and Tommy in a great twirl?" That's really good. Oh, here we go. My name's in here. "Weekly TV briefings by Brandon at 2:00 tell us all what is new to do. While his hair gets a little longer, his voice gets even stronger. We all know he will make it through." I hope I do make it through. I wonder at times. Me too, Mr. Marley. Thank you. Number three, "Partial posts would not deliver things mailed. They just dropped the buckets off and hightailed. But there is no need to fret, you will get your bills yet from the buckets where our folders they sailed." All right, our awesome volunteers on the mail. And the last one, number four. "With many shells bared, hairs teeter, and our hairs doos that could be neater. Dining service being the best, that outshine all the rest. Make our lives at Springmore the sweeter." Bill Marley. Very good, Mr. Marley. Oh, special guest, Mr. Marley, has showed up early for our management advisory committee meeting. So, Mr. Marley, I don't know if I can present this to you. We have a bottle of Chardonnay. Okay, so this is what you win if you do. I may be Ms. O'Sullivan and... Oh! Okay, I thought Mr. Marley and Ms. Ruth O'Sullivan was going to get to have a social beverage together. And just, you know, yeah, Mr. Marley said he'd be glad to take it. Nice bottle of Chardonnay. But if you guys want to do a poetry slam, I really advise y'all to check that out. That would be so cool for y'all to do. Someone like Daniel and Holly and Brad, they're so much younger and hip than me. They can tell you all about this stuff. But it's, it's pretty cool to do. And in all seriousness, if y'all would like to do that, it's very, it's just a modern way of doing poetry. And it's really neat. So if y'all want to do that, Harry and David's Chardonnay. This is good stuff. That's good grape, some chicken, some fish, scallops, some pasta with white sauce. So yeah, I would, I would check that out, Harry and David. All right, poetry contest submissions, those were great. Mr. Marley, thank you for being here. I don't know why I feel like a radio host, but I do. And we will, Holly's going to send out the memo tomorrow. I'm off tomorrow and Friday, so don't call me, don't email me. I'm kidding. I am off tomorrow and Friday. But if y'all need anything, you know, we're always here. Holly's here. I'm always have my phone fortunately, unfortunately attached to my hip. So y'all have a great rest of the week, and we'll see you guys next week. Thank you.